We're going live, just so you know.
You're live on YouTube.
So we have to behave.
Hotlines.
I call the order Monday, March twenty seventh, Westlake City School Board of Education meeting. Roll call.
You're not?
Here.
Zinski?
Here.
Fanukin?
Here.
Kraft?
Here.
Stoll?
Here.
Everyone open stand for the pledge allegiance. And pledge allegiance. We have a fantastic crowd here today. I'm thrilled to see all the students here and parents and thank you for being with us this evening. Looking forward to our presentation in a few moments. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
I have. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call. Any discussion, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Kraft? Yes. Fanukin?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll move into the hearing of the public. Our Board of Education meetings are public meetings. This mean it is a meeting to be publicly meeting to publicly conduct our business in front of the public. There are times the public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in public debate and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all those who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Recognized speakers cannot transfer or delegate their speaking times to others. If a person wants to speak for longer than three minutes, at the end of the three-minute period, the speaker needs to stop. If additional people wish to speak, they will be given the opportunity to speak. If no one else would like to speak, the original speaker may continue for an additional three-minute period. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward for public participation? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. Has anybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Have.
Yes.
Any comments, discussion? Is there a motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Let's go ahead and move on to Science Olympiad.
Absolutely. We have a few informative reports, starting off with our Science Olympiad team. We do have Laura Latham here with a good number of her students and we will give the time to them to be able to talk about their accomplishments and their activities. So Ms. Latham?
Thank you. So one of our sayings in Science Olympiad is friends never let friends sign loans. So I've got a here today. On our team, we use that word a lot of different ways, but often I refer to it as our whole Science Olympiad group, and that means from anywhere from sixth graders up to twelfth graders and also includes a lot of our parents. Because every time we go to do any kind of Science Olympiad, it requires a whole lot of parent support plus a whole lot of team members. There are actually twenty-three different events that occur at a given tournament and that occurs usually the B and C tournaments happen simultaneously, not always. And there are twenty-three events in each. And those twenty-three events span a lot of different types of science and technology. There's a bunch of events that are biology events. There are several that are chemistry, several that are physics, several that are earth and space science, and several that are technology and engineering. And then there's another group that's just called inquiry and nature of science. So we have a lot going on at any given day in any given tournament. And so if you add up all those events that, you know, for tournaments, usually forty-six, and then sometimes they throw in trial events. So it's usually a pretty busy day. So we have this year a lot of team members. Our team numbers have increased greatly. So this year, we had fifty-seven total Division B students. That was in sixth through ninth grade. And Division C, we had in our tenth through twelfth grade, Division thirty-eight. So that's ninety-five students participating this year.
It's great.
Which was, which was a lot. We attended fourteen different tournaments. We've competed in three different states, Ohio, Michigan, and Pennsylvania. By the end of April, we will have visited five colleges, five college campuses, including University of Michigan, Carnegie Mellon, University of Pittsburgh, Baldwin Wallace, and OSU on April twenty-ninth. So another fun number that I kind of like to think of is that, you know, in a given, a given tournament, we have a single team and that single team can only be fifteen people. Well, we, with ninety-five total people, that's, we actually compete with lots of different teams at the same time. So we'll have like Westlake Green, Westlake White, Westlake Gray, Westlake Black, because we have a lot of team numbers this year. So technically, they're all competing against each other, but we don't really think of it that way, because if I have, that's how I have my teams all competing in crime busters in Division B, the goal is for them to finish in first, second, third, and fourth, and so that no one else can finish in that place. And that really helps our team standing. So there is definitely an advantage to having multiple teams compete. They kind of help each other out in that way. But when you consider that, so there's twenty-three different events, also each event requires at least two or two people. And two of the events allow you to have three, because there's so much going on in those events. So that's forty-eight, like, event slots per team, per tournament. And so if you add all that up for all the tournaments we competed at and all the teams we entered at all those tournaments, for Division B, we had one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine competition slots or, you know, different events that people participated in. And Division C was like almost that one, almost that much as nine hundred and fourteen. So totally, we were just shy of twenty-five hundred. That does not include the upcoming tournament at Ohio State. So we had a lot of, over, over time, we started in September and in September, we're basically doing recruiting and team formation. And then October, we move into starting to select which team members are going to work on which events. Any given team number, member cannot do twenty-three events. That's just way too much, but we shoot for, say, four. Some of the students who are older, who have been back again, may be familiar with some of their events, and so they take on additional events, might be doing, you know, maybe up to six events. So somewhere in there. So the idea is you're working on your own events at any given time and counting on your team members to, to, to do well and all the rest. And we formulate that, kind of figure out who's doing what in October. We start that effort. We start really working on our specific events. And then we start rolling into competition. This year, we started in November. When we went up to Michigan for the Celine Hawk and Hornet Tournament. And then our season is pretty much every, every week, it feels like that anyway. We hosted our tenth anniversary Westlake Tournament on January seventh, and we had about thirty-five teams from each division compete at that, and that went very well. And then every week, we've been going pretty much since then and competing wherever, as many chances as we can. And the whole idea really is that all culminates at regionals. And that happened on March fourth at Baldwin Wallace. And it was actually a different situation. We had a combined region, so it was our northern region, which is sort of the west side of Cuyahoga, plus Medina and the rain, a couple of counties over on this side. And then there's what they call the northeastern region, which is the east side of Cuyahoga and includes other counties out that way. And we actually had a combined tournament, even though technically speaking, all of our results were reported individually, since that has to do with how you win bids for states. So it was kept separately, but it was interesting that we had a bigger tournament setting, and that allowed us to kind of see where we stand with the other region as opposed to just our own. So our teams did very well. Both our Division B and Division C teams placed first in Northern Region. And then our Division B team also placed second overall, if you look at both regions. So we were very excited about that. The, that was, couldn't be proud of them, especially since a lot of cases, we had been at some of these other tournaments throughout the year, and we see like Beechwood or Mentor Memorial placing a little bit higher than us, and that didn't happen at regionals. We, we outpaced those teams. The, the only team we didn't edge out was Sullin'. So that was very exciting for me to see as a coach, watching us improve as we went throughout the season. And we're headed to state. So both the Division B and Division C are headed to states on April twenty-ninth. So we're kind of gearing up for that. Are practicing two to three times a week and should be ready to go. Um, so I know you would rather hear about the kids and have them tell about some of their experiences before we kind of jump into that. Do you guys have any specific questions for me or, or them? That's Mr. Kraft.
This is Latham, and it is always wonderful to see you. How long have you been doing what you're doing?
See, I think I started when my son was in seventh grade. That was two thousand and seven.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate all that you do, and it's all.
So are they gonna give us an example of what some of the events are like? It's a great segue, Ben.
All right. You've got your show and tell, right? Yeah. So some of the events are build events, where you have to build something ahead of time and then make the thing do what it's supposed to do. So go ahead.
Uh, so one of the events is bridge, where you have to build a bridge that's about a foot long, six inches tall, and it has to hold thirty pounds. And so it's an engineering challenge to use as the least weight possible to hold thirty pounds. And so it tests your building skills as well as your team strategy and your design. And so it's really interesting to have it play out and test your engineering as and in all STEM fields. But none of it could have been possible. That coach who organizes everything. She organizes everything. I, I don't think I could have built the bridge without her organizing materials and getting us all really jazzed to get into it.
Nice.
I like how Ben converted all of the units that he's, that are specified in the rules to English units for that description. All the rules are specified in metrics and all the weight is in them. But yeah, that event is, is, is great, but the sad thing is he, like, he works hard every week and builds this bridge and hopes to have the, the best structural numbers and then he has to break it. So he has to pour sand in, in the bucket and then it breaks and, and he has to start over next week. So. All right, so, um, where is Reagan?
Reagan, come on.
All right. Reagan is super brave. She is our youngest team member that's going to go in states. Come on Reagan. And do you want to take a minute to describe Storm the Castle?
Um, so for Storm the Castle, we have to build a trebuchet that we end up testing how far the, like, your device shoots either a racquetball or a tennis ball with a one or two kilogram weight. And then you have to predict how far it will go ahead of time. So you have to do a lot of testing to figure out, like, the consistency of it and figure out, like, when, like, how far it goes. And like, you have to have a whole launch mechanism, so you're not allowed to touch it, like, while it's in launch. And so you have to figure out launch mechanisms, and it has to fit inside a certain parameter of, I think, a meter by a meter, so it can't be, like, huge. So.
Very nice. That was a very good summary. We were discussing how it's impossible, at least I think she did a really good job of describing this huge event or how Science Olympiad has so many aspects. Like, how are you going to describe that in thirty seconds or less? But that was, that was great. So you actually, we have Reagan in sixth grade building medieval siege engines and hitting a castle, which is a bucket. And she did very, very well this year and has a lot of accurate results. Anybody else want to talk about their event? All right.
Uh, so the main event that I do is the anatomy event, where basically every single year, they give you three anatomy systems, like, for example, this year is the digestive system, the respiratory, and the immune system. And you're basically just told, go learn everything you can possibly learn about this, and then we're going to give you a test about it. Um, so because of how wide the, like, body is to study, you can't really do every single system in just one year and go as deep into it as they require you to. Like, by the end of the year, you're going into, like, grad school level, like anatomical studying. Like, you're not going to be able to do that for every single system, and especially not at, like, uh, some of the younger years, like, uh, uh, the Division B girl back there, I forget. Yeah, I forgot. Listen, I don't know the Julia, that does the anatomy event. She's in seventh grade and she's studying, like, PhD level, like anatomical stuff. Like, you're not, you can't do it all in one year. So like this year, I think I put in probably like over five hundred hours studying just those three systems. And you're still not even getting first at every tournament. So it's
Most of that.
But, yeah.
Were you drawn specifically to that science to spend so much time? And if so, what, what drew you to it?
Uh, I just, I really like looking at the intricacies of everything, because once you get super deep into it, you're like, oh my goodness, your body is not under any of your control. You're just controlled by a bunch of little chemical interactions. Determine everything you do and you have no free will. So. But, yeah. So.
I thought, I think, a very good description of that event, but I think that the, the kind of effort and breadth and, and depth that's involved in that event is actually applicable to most of the science and study events. So astronomy would certainly fit into that, disease attack is, there's Wi-Fi lab. Gosh, there's so many. Dynamic planet, you just have to know everything about the earth's fresh water, you know, the big crave the wave, you know everything about waves, earth, sound waves, light waves, earthquake waves, water waves. That's pretty crazy, man. Anybody else have an event you want to shout out? Okay.
I'm not a people person, so I prefer physics events. So the event that I mainly do is called It's About Time, very corny name, but it's a hybrid event. So you do a build portion similar to Ben's Bridge, and then you do a test portion similar to the other Ben's test, except it's based off the concept of time. So the build portion is you need to build a clock, mine is a mechanical one with gears. That is a pendulum clock that is purely mechanical. So there's no electrical components or previous timing devices. You have to make it and then use the gear ratio and the system of a pendulum yourself to completely manufacture a new device. And then they give you a specific time set that it has to run for, and it has to run for that time and then give off a signal as close as possible to the actual, a lot of times that they give you. And then in addition to that, you are given a test to do at the same time. That is based off all aspects of time. It can be relativity, it can be time zones, or you can expand it further to planetary orbits, time dilation, stuff based on the speed of light and, you know, time warping and all of those types of stuff. So it's a very interesting and very cool event that focuses on the applications of the world and beyond.
Nice. Thank you.
So what are your thoughts on daylight savings time?
I hate, I hate losing an hour. That's my formal opinion.
There's a, I often ask TJ, like, at least once a week, TJ, how's the time machine going?
Yeah. I'm going to talk about robot tour.
Okay.
Robot tour, well, yeah, of course I am TJ. Um, robot tour is an event where you have to build a robot that goes, that can navigate around a maze and get as close as possible to the target time and as close as possible to the endpoint while also hitting the bonus gates. What makes it a difficult event is building the robot. I mean, you have to figure out how many double A's you're going to use, because you can only use double A's, which is a pain, but I don't make the rules. Yeah. The, you have to figure out how you're going to move your robot. Are you going to use stepper motors, DC motors, brushless motors? What microcontroller are you going to use? Are you going to use an Arduino ESP thirty-two, maybe a Lego Mindstorm ZB three or NXT?
Well, and then you don't even know, like, when you arrive, you don't even know what the, the the arena, you know, it's a four by four, four foot by four push base, but you don't know what, how it's configured. So I think it's, it's critical on this event that the robot has to be completely autonomous. And so there's this, they'll build the robot, and then there's the whole programming, which is incredible.
Thank you. Now, there's also a girl back there with a plaque. What's, what do you have? When you're holding that, you know you're going to be called forward. So. What do you, what do you have there?
Um, it's from our regionals tournament that Coach was talking about. We got first place for Division B and for Division C. And yeah, a lot of effort went into it and uh, yeah, and we're hoping for like the same type of success at states. And yeah, we're just really thankful for Coach for making this all possible and so that we can get these awards. And like, I've learned so much this year and before, and I really all owe it to, like, Science Olympiad and Coach. So, yeah.
So does that go on the trophy case? It's at the high school or?
Or you just carry that around all? Now, we didn't plan this, but we are recommending a new science teacher to be hired here at Dover Intermediate School, Mr. Fowler, sixth grade science. So this is, these are the, the students here you're going to be seeing. So. Any other questions or any, anyone else?
I'm just excited that they're excited about science. So it's, it's.
So have you guys investigated the multiverse yet?
Oh, no, I'm sure.
That's an extra. That's an extra with the time. Well, I would like to personally say that my three children were in Science Olympiad and they really enjoyed it. It was a great opportunity for them to collaborate with their peers, go on trips, be away from home without their parents sometimes. So it gave them the opportunity really to, to mature, grow up, and learn some stuff about science. So, which is all good. So congratulations. Good luck at states. Will you have two?
What's that?
Top two?
Yep.
Go national.
It'll be good.
And just know, we're very proud of you all and what you do, and that, and we know the hard work that you put into it. So we do appreciate it.
Also, one last thing, we have a lot of parents here, and I know that when it comes to the event in January that Mrs. Latham was talking about, all of you are probably working very hard in some fashion, helping organize that. Without you supporting this, it, it wouldn't run. So thank you.
Laura, you said, how many schools were represented? At the, at your tournament?
Oh, I think about thirty-five in each division.
And my kids, that you think that was?
Um, I don't know. I figured we had about twelve hundred students turn on the building in science that day. That's pretty.
A lot of kids.
It's a lot of science.
That's good. It is.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck at states, guys.
Thank you.
And parents, don't, please don't feel like you have to stay. You're more than welcome. All right, Jake, got a lot of work to do.
Want you to continue on?
Yeah, I will keep going. Yep. Thank you very much. I will go through my reports. We're really getting to the, the time of year where there is just a lot going on throughout the district. I'm going to highlight some of them right now. Want to start off by congratulating the cast, crew, our pit, our directors and everyone involved with the Legally Blonde performance this past weekend. It was a lot of fun, a lot of
It was a lot of fun.
Big laughs, great talent, being able to uh, watch that. And, and I brought my whole family on Saturday night. Our daughter came home from college. And she was able to go back and see the show. So congratulations to everyone involved. It was, it was a whole lot of fun. Switching over to less fun is, I do want to talk a little bit. I don't know if you noticed over the weekend, we had a lot of wind come through Westlake. Uh, we did experience some wind damage from this weekend. Tennis courts really felt the brunt of it. The west section of the fence was pretty much taken out. And, and there were wind screens on there, which a lot of times are a good thing to have, but really, I think probably uh, helped attribute to some of that damage there. Uh, our team was cleaning it up today. Did they finish? Okay. So the plan is, uh, they will have, they do have that cleaned up. Uh, we can play with no fence on that side. And we have a contractor called in to fix it. We are going to look at our insurance. We don't, you know, we have a five thousand dollar deductible. So when we get the actual bill for what it would cost to repair, we'll make that judgment call on whether or not we should put in a claim or fix it on our own. And then the rest, most of the normal branch cleanup throughout the district. I don't think any trees fell. You didn't get any calls, did you?
No, no, not this time.
And so in some other fence damage, bleachers were upended uh, at Westlake High School, upper practice field and temporary fencing over by the lacrosse field, but nothing that was really that terrible, other than, like I said, the biggest one was the tennis court fence. Um, we do have a, well, just staying with that, there's a, not storm related, but a main water line leak that's going into the field house. Their contractor has been in and will be fixing that. Um, but other than that, that's all with the, so as we've gotten through this weekend, that's all that we have going. So I'd also like to send out special recognition to our Westlake Elementary School team. Uh, this past Friday night, they had their guys and gals dance, and that's when the, the girls in the elementary school and certain grades, do you remember which grades by any chance? It was everybody? Okay. So the girls were able to bring their favorite guy, could be a father, friend, relative, or someone like that. I was able to stop by there, and of course, I stopped by just as they were getting ready to clean up. So I was able to clean up with them, um, which went very well, but it was a lot of fun. It was a dance. And, and so you had just a lot of dancing going on. I found out what a spencil was. It's a smelly pencil, and it's very popular with the, the elementary school students. Um, but really, when I look at what Greg and his team are doing, they've had multiple bingo nights. They had the lads and ladies dance where it's like a, a, a mother-son dance. And just really doing a lot of those fun events. And it, it's really, it's really nice seeing the gym opened up, that wall, and just a whole lot of people enjoying that space. So that was, that was fun to see. This upcoming weekend, we have the Demon Derby. Uh, this is another one of my favorite evenings. We had Dollars for Scholars, which is one of my favorites. And Demon Derby is also one that we really enjoy. We do have a BOE table. So we will be there. And thank you, Liz, for coordinating that for us. Uh, this event supports our Westlake Demon Athletic Boosters, who then turn around and support our athletic programs. Uh, we want to make sure that people know that you can actually start bidding on those prizes now. So it is on the the WDAB website, which is westlakeathleticboosters.org. You can go on if you just want to make a donation. You can make a donation if you want to click on it and already get in on some of the baskets. They have some really good baskets. Um, you could start doing that right now.
Is it their silent auction items too, or just the basket?
I, I, I think there might, you'd have to go in and see everything that they have. I was just kind of looking at the baskets. I didn't do any of the silent auction. But they might be online. I don't know if they're online yet, or if that just happens there.
Email the table email group.
Uh, in addition to that, so the other two, I, I have two more things I want to talk about. Um, is I, I do have two people here who are on our agenda for either being new to the district in a position or within our district and moving to a new role. Um, I do have Jacob Fowler. Uh, we'll start with you. So if you want to come on up to the podium. And you have to start by listing every Science Olympiad event. No, um, I'll talk about you for a second, Jacob, while you awkwardly stand there. So Jacob Fowler is here this evening, and we are recommending him for the sixth grade science position at Dover Intermediate School. We have Nick Miller here, Principal of DIS to support him. Uh, Jacob is, Jacob currently teaches fourth and fifth grade science at Saint Christopher in Rocky River, where he is also the science club coordinator. Uh, he also has been coaching wrestling and football at Bay High School. Uh, Jacob has told us that he's very excited to join the team at DIS and then come here and get involved in our extracurricular activities, which Science Olympiad could be one of them. So uh, Jacob, welcome. And if there's anything you would like to say to the board or the community, feel free.
Thank you for having me tonight. Um, it was a pleasure to interview with yourself, Mr. Miller, Mr. Mabor, some other staff at DIS and Central Office. Really excited to be a part of the team of DIS and Westlake for the future. Um, it's going to be an awesome opportunity. I had the opportunity to actually tour the school and kind of shadow for a little bit on Friday. We had no school on Friday, so I got that opportunity. It was, was great. Got to talk to some of the students there. They were really engaged, very polite. Very excited to be learning and meeting a possible new staff member, which was very nice to see. Um, really enjoyed the school, the tour, all of it. So just to sum it up, I'm very excited to become a member. It's, it's an awesome opportunity. So thank you.
Any questions or anything from the BOE for Jacob?
It's nice to have you join Wesley.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jacob. Thank you. That wasn't that. We have Corey Rojek. Come on, Corey. Uh, it's going to be a familiar face. I am going to go through a little bit of his Arizona history as well. Um, just because I think it's important to get an idea of Corey as a complete Um, just because I think it's important to get an idea of Corey as a complete educator. Um, so. Corey is a known entity to us. He's being recommended to replace DJ Shaw as assistant principal at Westlake High School. Um, Corey joined our team a few years ago and I will tell you when we read his resume. Uh, we almost thought it was like fake, you know, as we went through it and we're, yeah, we're like, does this person really exist? Um, and and it almost seemed like it was exaggerated a bit, but uh. He has been recognized four times for his teaching. Uh, he earning the Silver, Gold, and then Crystal Apple Award. Then he was recognized with the Spirit of Agua Freia, that I pronounced.
Agua Freia.
Oh, okay, Agua Freia. Um, and he was also recognized in Arizona as the state of Arizona's coach of the year three times. Um, in Westlake, he's come in here and was as billed. Uh, he's been a teacher. At Lee Bernison Middle School in eighth grade social studies, as well as coaching our girls' basketball team here. We've seen firsthand the quality educator that Corey is and we're excited to have him join our administrative team. Corey, anything you want to add?
Thanks, thanks for the introduction. Um. No, I think, I think I my start of my career in education was. I was a junior in high school and I wanted to be a teacher. Not a lot of, I think, sixteen seventeen year old males, uh females or. Males are picking their time, like I'm gonna be a teacher, I want to be a coach, I want to do all these things. Uh, but I was fortunate to have. A lot of my family members, I had great teachers growing up, um, great coaches growing up. Um, so I think it's been, it's, it's been a fun process in education. Um, as a teacher, I had a lot of great administrators, so I think. You know, going through this process, I'm very grateful to everyone in the district when I came here from COVID. Uh, in Arizona, two thousand twenty, I made a joke with uh Mr. Gargian, Musselman, and Mr. Wilson, that my first time interviewing in person was. Couple weeks ago, when I was four years old, um, in two thousand seven, when I went out to Arizona. It was uh. It was a phone interview. When we came back here, it was COVID, nobody was meeting in person. Uh, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity. Um, I think. A lot of the teachers I've had have helped shape my career. A lot of the coaches I had have helped shape my career and a lot of the administrators I had, Mr. Faskier in Tennessee has helped. Uh, I'm gonna have a lot of questions for him as we go forward, but thank you for the opportunity. It's a great school district. I was worried when we came out here in two thousand twenty. Uh, there were so many unknowns, being at this, being at one school for fourteen, thirteen, fourteen years. Um, and then moving in the middle of a pandemic, uh, was very interesting. I didn't know how it was gonna work out, but it's really worked out, uh, well, uh, it's a great school to be a part of and I'm. Looking forward to making an impact as I go into my administrative career.
You can ask questions for anyone from the board?
Just thanks for all you've done and thanks for all you'll do. Uh, many, many. Uh, many of us look up to you and uh we look forward to your vision and where you'll take us.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Best of luck. And I found out I, was it your brother, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
It's a small world. I realized my first time ever working in a classroom when I was doing my practicum. It was with uh Mr. Hopkins' brother in Maple Heights. Found that out tonight. Your older brother.
Thanks, Corey. You know, one of the things with Corey that that we like is we went through is is like every stop he's taken, whether it was. Teaching, coaching, um, there's been that success component and he just brings the same characteristics and everything that he does, so we're really excited. We're really proud of the the administrative team that we have and we're really excited uh to have Corey join that.
Fantastic. Mr. Hopkins, treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um. At this time, I I don't have a formal treasurer's report, uh, so I would ask that I could uh go over my recommendations when we get to them later in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to me. Okay, I'll go through these relatively quickly. I do like to spend moment on our gifts and donations. We only have one listed here today. And it's a fifty dollar donation to the class of twenty twenty-three, uh, from the Rocky family, uh, Kim Rocky of Westlake. Here in Ohio, uh, but thank you to the Rocky family. We appreciate that. Uh, other items that I have, uh, as I mentioned, um, in letter B, we have Corey Rojek being recommended. Letter C, I covered, um, we have, that should be. Jacob, but my, well, my my computer was lagging, so I clicked on it and that should be Jacob.
Fatigue I hear. Solvers.
We need that. Uh, we have some additional hires as we go through some classified staff member, linked personnel, Westside Connections. Uh, one like Westside Connections, you you typically see annually, um, so that shouldn't be any difference. Changing contract for a classified staff member and that's moving, um. Uh, this particular staff member from two and a half hours a day to three hours a day, and then we have um athletic supplemental contracts. Primarily spring coaches and then um athletic supplemental contract for a. Classified staff member, we do have to do those differently due to the fact that they are hourly, um, so it has to be broken down. Uh, differently than what we have in letter H. And then a home instructor, uh, recommendation as well as a licensed substitute. Doing work for us and then stipends for classified members. Uh, helping out with extracurricular activities. I think a few of these might even have been from the Shamrock Dance, if I remember correctly, right Jane? Okay. And then uh K six, uh, um, K six title and summer intervention program coordinator Caitlin Soltis. She's done this for us the past few years, I believe, um, really doing a nice job there. And then um purchase service, this is with educational alternatives with a student placement. And then the final one is a resolution for summer athletic camps. Um, we can break these up any way you want. I would be fine with having four A separate and then. B through O, um, join together if that's okay with you.
Um, I don't know why, but I like to do the, um.
Each of these. Okay, but we could do that.
Okay, okay, so A, B, C, and then D through O?
D through O, correct.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve for A?
So move second.
Discussion. As always, thank you to everyone who makes donations to our school district and especially for the class of twenty twenty-three. Yeah. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Craft, yes. Stole.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Zinski.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Superhendence recommendation for B.
So move second.
Discussion.
Welcome.
Looking forward to seeing you at the high school. Roll call.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve for C?
So move second.
Welcome to Westlake, Jacob.
You're for C.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stole.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a recommend, uh? Motion to approve for D through O? So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the coaches for volunteering for all those summer camps. That is a great way to keep in touch with the students over the summer and uh obviously help build their team uh for the coming year, so thanks for them.
So a lot of camps too.
Yeah.
It's a great way to kind of develop with the younger. Or younger demons. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lizinski.
Yes.
So the new, Fanukin.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Go ahead and move on to our second hearing of the public. Okay, we are actually going to now adjourn to executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law. Or rules or state statutes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
To adjourn into executive session at six thirty-nine PM. Craft.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Here not.
Yes.
Motion carries. You are now in executive session.
And it is noted that we're going back into the regular session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. Hand it back over to Mr. Hopkins for your recommendations.
Thank you. I'm just making a quick change and renewing the All right. Thank you. Before you tonight, I have four recommendations. I'll go briefly through them for you. We have some then and now certificates. If you have questions, please let me know. The second I have on there B is a settlement agreement regarding a I D A situation. The C, we have approved contracts and purchase services. Julian group, we use Julian group for our audit services. They do our main audit and do a really nice job to our audit and Caffer, but they also do a piece for us with our Medicaid audit. So if the board's not aware, we do have students who qualify for Medicaid services. Typically because of a disability with and they're receiving occupational health or physical therapy type services. And in those cases, we are able to build back to the Medicaid program. So in order to do that, we have a company H P C that we have approved who kind of coordinates this for us. Because all the hours have to be tracked. We have to have sign off by parents. There's a whole big process and they oversee that. And the second piece of it in order to to participate is you have to have an annual audit done by an independent pollinator. So we utilize Julie group to do this audit. So it's a in the past few years, it's been eighteen hundred dollars for the year that just ended fiscal year twenty two, which we're starting the audit now would be another eighteen hundred dollars. And then next year or the year that we're in right now, when we do the audit in the future, there would be another eighteen hundred dollars. I'm also asking to use them as we continue going forward. They have a slight increase going to nineteen hundred dollars per year in fiscal year twenty four and twenty five. They do a nice job. Make it relatively painless for the district. All in all, we spend about ten thousand dollars a year in order to run the program to coordinate the program. But we do receive about ninety thousand dollars in revenue back from the Medicaid program. So it is advantageous to us to participate and makes sense for the district. So if the board would consider that, I would appreciate the approval of that. And then my final resolution is a letter D. We had spoken at length or I've spoken at length to the board during updates. The Ohio legislator passed House Bill one twenty six, which this was back in twenty twenty two, which changed the way we're allowed to challenge property values. So we used to be able to, we have a property attorney. So we used to be able to, our, we have a property attorney. Who would look through the the sales records, tax records. Challenges from property owners will look through those would work with me, make a recommendation on here, we should look at. Challenging these either directly challenging them or responding to a challenge from the property owner. And then we would move forward on those cases, we could resolve them. By either working through the process as it stated out by the Board of Tax. Or Board of Revisions and Board of Tax Appeals. Or you could do a payment of lieu. Settlement agreements that would allow a direct payment to the district, so Hospital one twenty six made a number of changes as we've talked about it, they took away. Those payment Lou settlement agreements. One of the other changes is anytime we challenge, the board has to have a vote on every challenge. So if we had five challenges before the board tonight, we could combine those into one vote. But the vote has to stand on its own, it will not be combined with my other items tonight. So I'll ask the board to do my A through C and then but vote on D separately. So in this case, I have given the board some information on why we're challenging it. It is a sale of the property where the property was sold at a significantly higher value than it's being valued. For tax purposes, so I am asking the board to allow us to challenge this piece. You'll see in the resolution, there are other pieces that. We now have to give certified mail notices of the challenge, the county already does that, but we have to do it as well. It's a weird thing that's that 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 we've not had to do yet since the changes went in place in January, but. This is the first time for us that we've seen it and I am asking the board to consider it tonight, so. As I just stated, if it would so please the board, I would ask that we combine. What is it seven? A, B and C. And then have D voted separately.
Would anybody like to make a motion for seven A through C?
So second.
I have a new in a second, okay.
Discussion. The Ohio School Council gas program is that for buses, the fleet or?
Uh, no, this is your natural gas program.
Okay, I was gonna say that's awfully low.
Yeah, no, this is your your natural gas, we're we're able to purchase natural gas in aggregate along with other schools to help reduce the cost.
I wish I could.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Craft, yes. Fanuken?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole, yes. Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a motion for seven D to move?
Second.
Discussion.
Do you have any idea if it's going to continue as a daycare center? Once it's sold?
No clue, this is the the information that I have regarding is what I've passed along to the board to review. You know, again, this is one that the attorney does monitor sales transactions. And it's based on face value, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with it, but it did sell at a significantly higher.
Quite a sale price.
Yeah, for.
I I just wonder how much land is involved there, that's.
Well, the building relatively new. A good sized building, but probably not.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?
Yeah.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we're moving into board.
I have one comment on the meeting on April tenth, I believe there we need to took to look at possibly moving that date.
Correct, the work session for April tenth falls over spring break and it's also Easter Monday.
Easter Monday, yeah.
Easter Monday, so is there a preference to move it the week forward or the week back? That would be April third or the seventeenth?
If the board doesn't have a preference, I did check with Mr. Kosovar because I think one of the one of the main topics of the work session would be. Permanent improvement and he is unavailable on the seventeenth itself. We could look at other dates that week if it would work for the board, but.
I'm good on the third.
I'm good on the third.
So let's go ahead and move that to the third.
Are you good?
I'm.
Okay.
We will post it as a change.
Thank you. Other board comments? Um, I've got some things to.
I was just gonna say my visit to the place to be, I've chatted with some board members about that. Met a number of students that actually volunteer in that classroom. Part of best buddies. And I know Tabitha Divine took a group of best buddies students to strike it big, that's the milestones, autism resources event. Basis and. It was good to hear about that, good to hear from students that are part of best buddies on all sides and. Just what a great growing organization that continues to make an impact.
They have a big walk coming up at Rock Park, do you have the date on that?
I do. See if I can bring it up in a.
It's not just a Westlake event, it's, I think, citywide. It just so happens it's in our backyard.
Yeah, I will make the board aware of that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, we have all received a packet from Polaris.
Right, thank you.
Polaris is. Looking at other districts to expand into. And for those of you who don't know, we already partnered with. Westshore, which would be Lake, which takes part mostly at Lakewood's High School and it's Lakewood, Rocky River, Bay Village and Westlake. And that. Is where we provide our career tech services. Would, did anybody have any particular thoughts they would like to talk about on this?
Well, I for one do not care for the financial. Costs involved. I'm not in favor of. I'm not in favor of joining Polaris because I think the prices are just too high, what what will we need two point nine mils or something?
Well.
Point six nine, two point six nine mils. I mean. Listen, I toured Westshore last year. And. I mean, before we got involved with that, I I would prefer even seeing us do maybe classes on our own campus. Before we, you know, would commit to Polaris, I just think the cost is way too high.
I think it's important to especially clarify, right now, the way Westshore is paid for is out of our general budget. And it's under nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we switch to something like Polaris, it would add two point six nine mils. On top of what is currently. On the bat, what is already currently charged to our community, so it would. Definitely increase the taxes, so that's just something I think it's important to.
And the cost would be what?
Four point eight million. So you'd go from about nine hundred thousand to four point eight million, and I think the other, just to. The the part that really and and it's nothing, I mean, we think Polaris does a nice job and it's nothing against them as an institution. I think the, when we look at it and what I struggle with is that when you have a board of five people. Who can put a motion right now. And and make a vote and raise your community's property taxes two point six nine mils. That's not something that I would recommend we engage in and to put it in perspective. We built Westlake Elementary School. And we started a permanent improvement stream for two point one mils. So the amount of things we can do within the Westlake community specifically for our Westlake students and families. With two point six nine mils would be incredible. And I think just taking that money from our community and sending it to Middleburg Heights is not something. We appreciate the push, we understand they want to expand, but. I wouldn't recommend.
No, not for the number of students that would be going, I I don't see the value there at all.
Yeah, it's like the dollar, the dollar amount per student compared to what we're. Being currently offered through Westshore versus Polaris would be. We'd need a lot of students.
We would need an incredible amount of students, but I love the idea and in talking to them. Their push would be like satellite programs here in Westlake, cause you know, then you instead of going, when you look at where Lakewood is right now, the the the. Distance between us and Lakewood is Rocky River, right, you know, you drive pretty much through Rocky River and you're in Lakewood. Then the other way you're going to Middleburg Heights, so the push would be. Doing satellite programming here, which we can do on our own, you know, especially as we look at. The governor has three hundred million dollars in grants that are available for people to apply to if there are things. I I guess the thing is. I don't know if we need them to do satellite programs on our own campus, you know, we can kind of do that sort of thing. So I think, you know what, it's one of those things. Sometimes it's nice to be asked to the party, you know, even if you don't want to attend, so we appreciate the invitation. But as far as I think.
And we talked about the idea of embracing Polaris's taxation without representation and it's doesn't seem fair. I think about two as we've chatted with our counterparts in our. Friendly districts around us. We had a an event not so long ago.
Yeah.
But do we potentially take the opportunity to meet with our friendly neighbors and have this as a conversation?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I really like that. As a matter of fact, I'm meeting with the superintendents from all these districts on Thursday. Okay, and and so I can.
Would you like us to be the lead on that?
No, no, I could bring it up to them, we're we're meeting on Thursday to talk about different satellites or different.
I've had the district.
But I know, but I could bring that up to them for them and take it back to the boards.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate.
So with the state grants hypothetically. If. If we applied for we or it.
As a question, yeah, sure.
It could really be used anywhere, so if Westlake, or I'm sorry, if Lakewood wanted to. Build something additional or if we wanted to build something additional or modify something. We would be able to probably apply for that. Grand.
Correct, now there's some contingent, there's always drinks, right, you know, and the way they phrase it. Is there's an Ohio TOPS jobs list where they the the state has identified needs.
Sure.
And and so we would need to get favorable if you match those needs and then you can run. What's interesting is. Even if a program is offered in Lakewood, if we decide we want to offer it in Westlake. We can do redundant programming if space is typically an issue. So it's it's something where if people can't get in at Lakewood and you want to open a satellite in Rocky River, Bay Village, that sort of thing. You can do that as well, so there are. I think some different opportunities that we may have, but it is guided a lot by. The top jobs, but that counts renovations, new construction, equipment, pretty much the startup to be able to. Do whatever program it is and some are more costly than others based on the equipment you would need to get, but yes, you could, we talked about it where. In Lakewood, they have what's called the D building where they have automotive construction trades and I think some other programs where it's a really high lofted area. They could just build off that and be able to do something in there if we choose to, so, but you'd have to be awarded. But I think being in the consortium and having something come from, you know, Lakewood, Rocky River, Bay Village and Westlake. We're. Hopeful that we'd be able to get some funding.
We could use that whole wing right there.
You could use the whole way, bring kids in, yep. Just renovate it. That's all.
Yeah.
Something we've talked about for the last couple of years is updating the pay to participate and especially planning for next school year, it's something to just kind of get back on the radar.
Are we in line with? Other other school districts?
That's one of the questions, are we in line, you know, in. From my recollection, it was put in place and it was supposed to be updated going in then COVID hit. And then with the changeover, the athletic director, so it's definitely something. And and please note, it's not, you know, we need to increase fees or whatnot, it's just stop and let's take a look at it.
Need to just take a look at it, also, we aren't, we aren't doing our drug testing anymore.
Here we are.
Are we still?
We actually just did it, I happened to walk down to see Mr. Renalo and they were finishing up the table.
Any other board comments?
Um, in light of what happened today. With the school shooting in Nashville. And I don't, I haven't seen any of the latest accounts to know if there was an SRO in the building.
Don't believe there was.
Okay, I mean. Just. It's upsetting and you know, you always think of our situation, it's nobody ever thinks it's gonna happen in their school, so that was my question and I haven't heard any news.
And again, I don't know a ton about it, it's initial reports, something that I saw posted indicated that there wasn't.
Okay.
And.
I mean, they responded very quickly, so. But. Okay. So I said.
I was just gonna say thank you, Mr. Hopkins, for continuing to be a face and a voice when it comes to school funding here in Ohio. It's appreciated.
Where was that in the Observer?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see that. Hmm.
It's better off, I'd say West, West.
I think it was, I think it was a senior photo though. Senior. Nothing wrong with, I haven't changed it.
Any other board comments or board additions?
The play, I I agree, we went Sunday, great, very good. They. They either have audio issues or they need audio changes. There was just, I think there was a couple.
What night did you attend?
Didn't we just do something with the sound system?
I went Sunday.
Friday, I would say it was ninety seven percent.
Yeah, oh, no, 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 I would.
Yeah, there there's something we and I don't.
There was a couple, it could have been. The mic on, mic off, yeah, timing type of thing.
We've talked about that where we're gonna bring in a couple vendors and have them really look at it, also could have been, it was a huge cast, was ninety eight, you know, however many microphones.
I don't even know how you control that.
But we, it's definitely something because the thing about it and having a daughter and and who performed in in plays. You know, as a parent, you sit there and you wait for your kid's moment.
Yeah.
You know, and then and when the microphone's not working, it's kind of like, ah, you know, it was one of those where. But I definitely think it's something that needs to be looked at.
For sure.
It was an amazing production.
It was a great production, you're right.
Very nice job. Big cast.
Big cast.
Big cast.
Any other board comments or items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So second.
Discussion.
To adjourn at seven twenty eight P M, craft?
Yes.
Fanuken?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are adjourned.
At what time does the thing start on Saturday?